All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 5:00 PM. And with that, Mrs. Bog, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Pelley Van Ooglu?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Seven members present.
All right. Just so folks know, Mr. Garza had asked for an excused absence. Sorry, he's under the weather. That brings us to agenda item number three. These are the meeting minutes for March 8th, 2024. Councilman Cost.
Yes, can we move the minutes for Monday, April 8th, 2024 as written?
Sure. Did I say March? April, sorry. Nope, it's all good. There is a motion on the table, and just to be clear, that motion is for the April 8th meeting minutes as written. Any questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to agenda item number four. This is public comment on agenda items. We do have a number of departmental budget presentations today. We also have a report from Human Services, or I should say, Human Relations and Community Services, as well as a resolution regarding the interim city attorney. So if you are interested in speaking to any of those items, you may come up to the podium for up to three minutes. Please start with your name for the record, please. Thanks so much.
Good afternoon, Loretta Stanaway, and I'm here to talk about the budget issues for the cemeteries. And as far as I can see, it looks pretty good on the whole. There are a few areas that are questionable that I would like to see some answers come out of before the budget gets approved. And one of those is how is it that they're asking for $278,861 more dollars for grounds crew? And for $168,503 more dollars for personnel? And $15,806 more for equipment? Those all speak to investments that I'm unaware of what they represent. And it would be a good thing to know those things before a budget gets passed. I see also there's quite an increase in the transfer from Parks Village into the Parks Budget for the cemeteries. I'm assuming, and we all know what that means, but I'm assuming that that represents an increase because of the extra funds that have come through various different agencies related to COVA or whatever else. So I'm presuming that that isn't just a bigger chunk of money coming out of the general fund or whatever for the cemeteries, because there shouldn't be an increase otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that'd like to make comments? All right, come on up.
Hi there. My name's Tiffany Zekel. I'm here to talk about the general fund with property taxes. Like I said, Tiffany Zekel, I'm the owner and broker of The Local Element. We're a locally focused real estate firm located a few blocks from here at 414 Ionia. Since 2001, I've sold real estate throughout the state of Michigan, serving as a HUD contractor, and I tend to focus on affordable housing, working with nonprofits, housing commissions, community developers, and in addition to our four real estate offices' operations. The reason for me appearing before you today is because of the stark contrast of Lansing's tax rate versus other municipalities in our state. I'm sure that you are aware, property tax rates vary by municipality, but Lansing far and away exceeds the majority of other communities. For example, of the 235 residential properties currently for sale within the city of Lansing, the average sale list price, excuse me, is $173. Annual property taxes, if reassessed once that cap is removed, would equal $5,070 for a new owner occupant, or $6,600 for an investor. If that same home was sold in Grand Rapids, it would have annual taxes of $2,900 for an owner occupant and $4,500 for an investor. That's a difference of $2170. Said another way, $180 a month less. That's one example. Waterford is $2,000 a less year. Livonia is $1,500 less, and the comparisons go on. When I discovered this difference, I was told by professionals in my community, it's because the state and educational buildings occupy so much tax-exempt space within the city that the difference has to be made up by residents, which was an answer I reluctantly accepted until the seven-to-one approval by the city council made March 11th to accept and redistribute $80 million from state towards the ever-evolving New Vision Lansing Project and City Hall plans. $80 million for a proposed 460 new apartments and City Hall would have covered 133% of the expected annual revenue for all city property taxes. A redirect of those funds would have directly impacted housing affordability for 112,000 city residents, many of whom have been very vocal about the increase in rent and cost of living over the last four years. Obviously, this is an extreme example, and the way that that grant was written vaguely was to promote new affordable housing, but it did reignite a sense that there is an incredibly high tax rate in Lansing and something needs to be done. With a proposed $49 million, excuse me, being received from the state in this next year's budget, there should no longer be a perpetuated excuse of higher tax rates to continue for what the state is not contributing to the city's budget. It is my proposal, especially during the season of budget review, that the council take up the cause in conversation to reduce property taxes for the benefit of current residents, to attract new residences and businesses, to populate our commercial corridors, and also in the hopes that for-profit developers would no longer plead with the city for large state grants, tax credits, and abatements in order to make their projects viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks that would like to make public comment? Come on down.
Hi, David Ellis, resident of downtown Lansing. And I just wanted to make a comment on two portions of the city's budget for this year. Firstly, at the mayor's State of the State address, he had made mention of the Operation Slowdown and how that improves pedestrian safety and such on roads, which has been identified as something that could increase livability downtown and boost downtown's population, and therefore, tax income for the city. But then there was nothing actually done in the budget to promote the program. And in addition to that, it looks like the program has not made any streets safer since at least 2020 due to budget issues with the program. So it seems completely counterintuitive for us to be promoting this program, but then not actually doing anything with it. Jumping on top of that, if you actually look at the taxable value per acre of many of the properties downtown, you'll see they are far and away above much of the rest of the city. Therefore, if we are looking to increase our tax revenue and therefore be able to decrease the overall tax rate we have for properties, we should be looking over and over to be promoting as many high-density buildings downtown as possible. As previously mentioned, there's large swaths of downtown Lansing that generate zero tax dollars, so we already sort of have a large setback in that regard that we have to work our way around. And being able to fund programs like Operation Slowdown would be fantastic for helping to promote these buildings. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I presented you all with a piece of paper double-sided with the headline Andy Shore on it, and I'm going to have conversation for, and I'm asking that you all question and have conversation with the city attorney, human resources, and the mayor eventually about his budget, and the $90,000 paid to Scott Bean, his communications director. And so what you're looking at in this piece of paper is Andy Shore back in February 16th of 2019 stating that he was going to be moving from this page, which was his personal page, to a governmental page. On the back of this page, you can see which those governmental pages are. One says mayor and governmental stuff, Andy Shore, which is now the mayor Andy Shore. It was changed, I believe, back in 2020. But in the second paragraph, he says, "From now on, all city-related posts will be through facebook.com/AndyShore. If you want to tag me on anything city-related, whether you are excited about something or have complaints about something, you can tag me using @AndyShore," which is now the mayor Andy Shore. I also want to direct you to our city charter and 1-302 Non-Discrimination is Civil Rights. One, and the exercise of its powers or in the performance of its duties, the city and all of its agencies shall ensure that no person or group engaged in the conduct of official business or seeking to do business with the city is discriminated against because of race, creed, political orientation, color, national origin, marital status, sex, age, handicap, or for any reason, or for any cause not reasonably related to the accomplishment of a legitimate governmental purpose, and shall take whatever action is necessary to accomplish this purpose. The city and all its agencies shall ensure that the civil and constitutional rights of all persons are not denied or abridged." Now, I want to tell you the penalty for that, for going against that part of the charter. 1-501, Penalties for Violation of Charter. Any person found guilty of an act of constituting a violation of this charter may be punished by a fine not exceeding $500 or by imprisonment for not to exceed 90 days or both in the discretion of the court. This section shall not operate to limit or prejudice the power to remove officers or discharge employees, which Scott Bean is, as provided in his charter. So I'm here to express to you all that I'm just giving you proof, if you've ever seen America 20 to Life and how many times we tag Mayor Shore daily. Today I did it again. This is what drew me here today. And immediately, within 10 minutes, Scott Bean did his job as the communications director and untagged himself, violating my First Amendment rights. There's case law on this. I'm making you all aware of it. At this point in time, it's on you all to do something about this. I'd like for you guys to ask what that job performance is of the communications director, if violating people's rights, if going against the charter that he swore an oath to as an employee, just as I did when I was, is within his job description. HR may have something to say about that as well. I think all of you all have been made aware that they untagged themselves from Facebook posts, which is a violation of our First Amendment rights. So please look into that. I'd like to hear from the city attorney, HR, and the mayor on that job description. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Norma, come on down.
Yes, it's me, Norma Bauer, and I'm here to speak in favor of Fair Chance Housing with the nation outside people, because it's going to solve, or at least begin to address, our homelessness issue. And it's a win-win-win situation. All the benevolent landlords are going to get tenants who are there for, you know, 20 years and move on to their own home because they got a job, because they got coaching from nation outside, from people who've already done it that way. So it's a no-brainer, and I really, really hope that you can see the value of a proclamation that has been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else that would like to speak related to the issues on the agenda? Come on down. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Hands, and I'm the broker manager for The Local Element Greater Lansing. And I'm here, I just want to speak on the homelessness issue and as being part of the working in the homeless community and also the addiction community, we do have a problem. Statistics show that we have at least 600 people that are considered homeless. Those that can be counted by the organizations that help them and take them in at night. I want to ask, I know and I appreciate the efforts that are going on, and I know behind the scenes, many things are happening between the city and actually the homeless community. But I want to say that I do believe we need some sort of a resource center downtown for our homeless citizens. They can't stay in the shelters. They have to leave in the morning when the sun comes up. They have no place to go. I see them every morning when I'm driving in downtown to work. My office is nearby. I see them hanging out at the library, hanging out in various places. They don't bother anybody, but they're there and they need a place to go. And maybe we can look at possibly putting some resources in that center for them to utilize to maybe get help for addiction or mental health treatment, but bring the services to them in some sort of a center that's downtown. I know we have a lot of vacant buildings downtown that we could utilize for this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Seeing none. We're going to move down in terms of our agenda to item number five. We will start with a number of departmental budget presentations. We kind of started this exercise back at the end of March with the conveyance of the mayor's recommended budget to city council. We did start departmental budget presentations last Monday, so we heard from a number of departments already, and we have a number of departments to go. We did, a few years back, start trying to be a little bit more intentional with the process. We were, I can recall the first few years on my council, it was more of an annual review on a regular basis. It was more of a programmatic update. So what we're trying to do is really hone in on budget conversations, budget issues. And so each departmental director that will come before us tonight has been asked to answer nine questions. I'll read through those very quickly. Now, the first is, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? Are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting positions in your budget, and if so, provide specifics? Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? What are or who are the top two largest vendors for your department, and when were they last bid? What, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department, and what were the savings? So again, the purpose is to really help us understand better each departmental budget as we kind of proceed through our process and take a look at whether we're going to support the budget as recommended, or if we are going to look at as a body adjustment. So with that being said, without further ado, we're going to bring down our folks from the District Court, 54A District Court. I do believe we have Anethia Brewer, who is our court administrator. I don't know if Susan or Chief Judge Station Buchanan will come down. Yep, okay, perfect. Come on down. So we'll simply ask that you make sure that the light is on, and then we are going to turn the floor over to you. You have the nine questions. I would ask that folks allow our guests to make it through their presentation before we post questions. Thanks so much.
Good evening, council. I am Anethia Brewer, your court administrator, and with me this evening is our Chief Judge Station Buchanan. Also with us is our Chief Judge Pro Tim Cynthia Ward, our deputy administrator Susan Neeling, and our eviction diversion coordinator Ulysses Rosa.
Can I stop real quick? Yeah, you got to turn the green light. Is it? Okay, just pull it in.
Oh, wait, wait. Do you want me to start over?
You know what? Yeah, why not?
Okay. I'm sorry about that. It looked lit to me. Oh, that's loud. I was talking. Okay. I'm Anethia Brewer, your court administrator, and with me this evening is our Chief Judge Station Buchanan, our Chief Judge Pro Tim Cynthia Ward, our deputy administrator Susan Neeling, and our eviction diversion coordinator Ulysses Rosa. And I've asked them to attend for a reason, and we will get to that. If you don't mind, councilperson Hussein, I would like to say question number seven for last. I think it's going to be the most interesting of our information. So number one, what is the difference between our budget this year, this current fiscal year, opposed to our last budget? So the most that you will see is an increase in our security line. District Court has always had secured armed guards in District Court, with a number of incidents that have taken place inside and outside of City Hall. In agreement with the executive office and facilities, we decided to make the entire building armed guard. So we have a very good security team, and that kind of happened mid-season, and with that, we share that cost of the rest of the City Hall to increase or enhance our security here. You will also see a decrease in contractual services. This is mostly due to the state of Michigan. We're on JIS, which is Judicial Information Systems. It's our case management system, owned and operated by the Supreme Court. And we are so happy they have taken the initiative to eliminate the user fees for our case management system. And just last year alone, that's over a $55,000 savings. We are looking for that to be more, because in the past, we were charged based on the number of filings that came through the court. So with that said, and to more savings, our overall budget is about $100,000 less than our last fiscal year. Are there any changes in the services that our department is responsible for? We don't have any changes, more say, in our routine daily tasks, but we have had to change the way we've operated lately. I'm quite sure most of you are aware of the new clean slate legislation. It's created a number of changes for the courts and our processes. We were responsible for making thousands of cases non-public, which also means that we make notification to law enforcement agencies to make arrest records non-public. It's changed a little bit of the way we do business, but definitely a benefit to our community. So we continue to receive these changes to our current processes so that we align with what that legislation is trying to do for the citizens of Michigan. We did have one increase that we agreed to, and that is going to be on our civil infraction ticket. We're going to increase those by $5. So we'll go from 130 to 135, which will be the standard cost across the board. We're still the lowest in Ingham County, but definitely within the recommended assessment guidelines from the state court administrator's office. So that's the one service fee that we are addressing this year. We have absolutely no major equipment purchases, any other type of capital purchases. We are set, we think, until such time. We are looking at our new justice complex. So we are pleased to say that we are in a position to carry our daily functions without adding anything else to our department. We do have two contracted positions that I wanted to bring to your attention, and those are two part-time magistrate positions. I don't know if you all are aware, but several years ago, we used to have a countywide on-call system where someone would be in charge of night on-call, weekends, and holidays. A few years ago, all three courts decided that we were going to split ways and do, everybody handle their own matters in their own jurisdictions. So the part-time magistrates assist us with lead for our judicial offices. They assist us with weekends and holidays. And for our newer council members, I know it doesn't always sound like the court works 24/7, but our judicial officers work 24/7, 365 days a year. So those two contracted positions are in place to make sure that we can carry out our duties as far as on-call services. Our top two largest vendors in District Court are security, of course. Just had a meeting last week with facilities to talk about a bid that will be going out next month. So we are looking to do that for our security line. Our second largest vendor was, is actually DBI now, so our office supply vendor that the city uses. It would have been the state of Michigan, but again, we will not be charged for any fees for using our case management system in the future. So huge savings there. We have made some operational changes to become more efficient. And the one thing that I want to share with you all tonight is about our electronic filing that was deployed in our civil division in late November. This mandate requires law offices to file civil matters, so for those who do not know, we're talking landlord tenant, small claims, general civil. We have some land contract matters. Those types of things are required to be filed electronically. Now, that is not the case for pro se litigants. We are still assisting them with that process, so they can still come in with paper in hand. But we are looking at a saving soon. I can't tell you that now, because it's still so new. But not ordering case files, the amount of paper we're using, I'm seeing that savings is definitely going to come and the supplies needed to carry out the work that we do on the civil side of the court. And I'd like to go back, if you don't mind, to question number seven. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing in this budget? So I say this question for last for a reason. We really don't have any new initiatives that will affect the actual budget, the dollars. However, we do have two initiatives that is very much needed in our community that I wanted to share with you. First, our eviction diversion program. And again, I have our, Ulysses, will you stand? I want council to know who you are. Our coordinator for this program, some of you may know that we were selected by the National Center for State Courts as a member of the first 12-state cohort to begin eviction diversion services. They provided all of the funds for us to get started. Our program went live last July, and since July, Ulysses has met with 1,179 families. Just as important now, our program has basically been selected as the model for the National Center for State Courts. So they've already paid for Ulysses to present on the successes of our program in Tampa, Florida, Tulsa, Oklahoma, Houston, Texas, and next month, he comes home. He's presenting in Detroit, Michigan. So we're very, very proud of that, and we know that that program is just going to continue to flourish here in Lansing. And I encourage all of you, if you get any opportunity, to stop on the fifth floor and visit Ulysses and hear a little bit more about the connections that we've made. He's worked now with over 50 agencies on making sure that we keep our citizens in their homes. The second thing that I'd like to bring to your attention is that we were, re-meaning Judge Simmons and I, so another District Court judge, was approached in the past to consider a specialty court for public nuisance matters. We actually met with ex-council member Patricia Spitzley on possibly creating a community court to deal with some of the nuisances blight landowners and things of that nature. Well, this topic is something still to consider. We've encountered a more desperate need right now in our jurisdiction, and it is a need for a specialized drug court. Now, between the three district courts here in Ingham County, two of them actually have a specialized drug court. But because of their capacity, we have not been able to get many of our defendant's citizens in to get some of that specialized treatment. So Judge Simmons was approached by a number of treatment agencies in the area. They provided us with some stats, information about what they were seeing in the other courts, and said, "This is something that's definitely needed in the city of Lansing." So we've spent the last month meeting with agencies and our justice partners. I can let you know now, we have the support of the city attorney's office, the prosecutor, the public defender, law enforcement most definitely. Lieutenant Nathan Osborne has been with us at each one of these meetings, and we are putting together a grant to submit to the state court administrator's office to fund this project. The grant is due next month, and if it is approved, we are looking at a go-live date of October 1. And it is, you know, the more I sit with these treatment agencies and I hear, and of course, we all share some of the same people in all of the courts and here in Ingham County, we know what a need is just here in the city of Lansing. So that wraps up answering the nine questions, and we are now available for any questions you all may have.
Sure. And so before I turn it over to councilmembers, Judge Buchanan, did you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
All right, fantastic. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Vice President Hussein, slash President for today. Thank you all so much for being here, and thank you for the thorough update and information. My question is, you know, over the last, since the program has started, the eviction diversion program, it has been a great success. We've seen several constituents happy with the results, as well as the family overall and working in collaboration with other organizations. You indicated that the program has seen 1,179 families within the last year, and then you also, at the same time, said there wasn't any budget needs. What is the current budget for the program?
Well, it's all grant-funded by the National Center for State Courts. And how about if I can submit those exact figures to you?
Okay. And what is the, thank you so much, and what is the capacity of, you indicated Mr. Ulysses was the coordinator? What is the administrative staff or support that go along with his role in facilitating such a great impactful program in our community?
The program right now is tied to our civil division, so support staff that is utilized for whatever Ulysses needs is right here within our own home, our own house, meaning District Court. I see the program growing, and we have made plans for that in the new justice center, because it is possible that it will grow for us to help more and more citizens. But Ulysses, do you have? This is the reason I brought him.
All right.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Can you repeat the question for me?
The question is, it seems that the program has been impactful, and of course, I've had firsthand experience with working with constituents through the program and other agencies. You indicated that you've served 1,179 families this year, and my question was, the capacity as the coordinator, what staff, and I guess how robust is the program, if you're the coordinator, to deliver, you know, such high impactful results?
You know, I think it's a great testament to the agencies that support the families here in Lansing, everyone from Advent House to Crystal Ray to the agencies that provide children's services, food, diapers. Essentially, the menu that Lansing provides for the needy is so broad, so extensive, everything from mental health to, you know, children's book bags. I limit nothing that we can provide for these families. So when they come to eviction court, you know, they're coming in all shapes and sizes. There's disability resources, so I do not limit the resources that I provide to them. So I do not limit the resources that I provide to them. The way I look at my position is know the menu and make sure that there's no resource that I don't understand, that I don't know that's out there. And, and that's what they receive. On a weekly basis, over 900 households right now are receiving any resource, any event that's made available to them.
Well, let me ask you a question more directly. Do you feel that you have all of the resources in-house to deliver the services that you are at that level of growth? Do you have enough team and so on and so forth? Because this is budget, that's what we're talking about.
You know, it, it may seem like a lot for, for one individual, but it, technology allows me to, to move swiftly, you know? So if, if I find a resource today, within five to 10 minutes, over 900 households have that resource. And so we, National Center for State Courts provided a system called Mailerlight that allows me to reach countless numbers where, you know, the, the court system, the outlook at 500, you're capped. But with Mailerlight, I'm able to just reach limitless households without it being flagged as spam.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, can I just follow up on that? So you're doing an incredible job. And I really, I really, really appreciated the opportunity to get to know you, work with you. I refer to a lot of people to you. One of the things I appreciate about you is that you, you, when you talk about a menu as an example, you are constantly working to build out that menu.
Yes.
And so, you know, you are everywhere, it seems, at all times. Now, we're learning you're all across the country because you're doing such an incredible job. I think the question is, if, if there was a wish list, right? A staff person to help, a piece of equipment, a program? What is that one thing, if you could ask for something, I just better support your job and your, and your role, what would it be?
Gosh, that, that's an intense question. If, the thing that comes to mind is if, if the agencies that are doing the helping were, were willing to set aside their differences, whether they're political, whether they're religious, and really work together, we can more effectively get the services to these families. And I'll give you a great example. I had a landlord call me last August, actually July. He was helping a homeowner, trying to help a homeowner who could no longer access the home. She couldn't get in or out because of her disability. Within minutes, I connected them with Capital Area Housing Partnership. They have a program called the Tuesday Toolsman. They came out, within three weeks, she had a ramp built from the front of the home to the back of the home, a complete wraparound ramp. And they did this within three weeks. And I thought, how long did she need that and not know it was available? They built it for free. And so, within the community, services knowing what each other does is not as, you know, as, as clear as you would think it is. A lot of agencies are now reaching out to me. It's not just families saying, hey, can, do you, do you know an agency who does this or this? So, so the, the hub in the office has become connecting families to resources and also connecting resources with resources. And so, if, if there was a way for them to, to gel more and to see that this fire that's happening in Lansing, that together we could efficiently, you know, deal with it better, that's the unseen hand, right? A unified front. Everyone's kind of doing their own thing and they know what each agency does. But that gelling of these agencies, I think if that happens, we're going to help people a lot faster.
All right. Do we have other questions?
I do want to add one.
Any comments?
Because I know where you're getting at.
Right.
I would love to see us have an administrative assistant to assist Ulysses because he is very busy. But what we're bound right now, space.
Well, and, and I understand it. So I was going to ask a follow-up question, just generally to the, to the court. Were there any equipment or personnel requests to the administration that are not reflected in what was conveyed to us?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. If we have nothing else, I'd like to thank each and every one of you. And I meant what I said. I think you guys are fantastic. We had Judge Ward, actually at my constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. And one of the things I'm always impressed with is that folks from, from the shop, they, they are out, they are about, they're at the meetings, things of that nature. But they're not there to present or to campaign or they're really there just to listen and learn. And we really appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
That takes us to our next, sorry, departmental presentation, and that will be public services. We do have Andrew Kilpatrick on hand, and I don't believe he's coming down, but I do want to shout him out. We have one of our public service board members, Mr. Jason Wilks in the audience, who does an incredible job and is at just about every meeting I'm at to update folks in terms of public service and, and what's going on within the department. But again, today, we have our director, Mr. Andrew Kilpatrick. So Mr. Kilpatrick, we're going to turn the floor over to you.
All right. Thank you, Council, Vice President, President Hussein, and council members. I'll try and go quickly through the questions here. You may have follow-up questions for me, and that's, that's great. That's what this is all about. But the difference between our current budget and the proposed, with a couple of exceptions which I'll go into, is really just inflationary increases. So cost of utilities go up, staff costs go up, and so that's our increases. The exceptions are, we are requesting the addition of one arborist in our forestry division. And that will allow us to either trim or cut or plant more trees. Two solid waste operators, so one for the recycling side, one for the trash side. Trash side is especially important because the number of customers we have gotten has increased significantly over the last decade. So we're to the point where really unless we add staff, it's difficult for us to, to add more customers. And then they have a request for a seasonal employee at the wastewater plant, just to do sort of odd jobs out there. They haven't had a seasonal in a long time, or maybe not ever. And this would allow the full-time staff to focus on the things they're doing and have seasonals do other tasks such as painting and mowing and, and things like that. Other things in the budget that are a little different is sidewalk funding. So any increase that we have there will allow us to obviously replace more sidewalks. We're, we're spending about $200,000 a year just doing trip hazards. That does not take care of long-term sidewalk issues. So really, unless we have, I'll get into that later, but many times more than that, as we get out, say, five, 10, 15 years and the sidewalks get to the end of their life, we're going to have a huge budget ask or we're going to have to make a decision on whether we want sidewalks to stay in the city or not. And then the other is the Paulson landfill. So some people, Paulson Park was a former landfill, or you may even say dump up at the north side of town by Granger. And that is something that because of what was deposited there and the fact that it was not really an engineered landfill, we have contamination there that's migrating off-site. We've been doing a study to look at what we need to do to remediate that. Been working with EPA and they'll be bringing together partners from adjacent properties to try and figure out whose contamination is flowing where. And that will be something that once we actually get to the remediation, will be several million dollars per year for multiple years. And we'll be looking for grant funding for that, but it's tough to find that type of funding. And that's not something that we can put on our trash fund because that facility was there before we had the trash fund as an enterprise fund. So that was all general fund revenue coming in at that point in time. So that'll be a, a big thing that unfortunately we have to do. And now that EPA is involved, essentially, we, we have to do that more quickly than maybe we would have liked to. Any changes in services? No, we're not changing services. I'd like to say that every year we've become more efficient, but there's a, a limit to that. It can't be year over year, everything more efficient. Any fee increases? Yes, we have inflationary increases every year. So sewer rates go up, trash rates go up, and our recycling and yard waste rate goes up. And those are generally less than inflation. I will point out, there is one thing that the cherry caught when this was submitted. As far as on the trash side, we had a, a year or two when we had budget rates, our rates approved to increase. And because of the pandemic, we did not increase them. So we are still asking for an increase, but it's not necessarily essential this year. What we'd like to do is implement those rate increases every July, just to coincide with our fiscal year. And based on when the city sends out our notices, if we wait until May when the budget is approved, we actually can't implement that until later. Not the end of the world. We can implement, implement that the next quarter. So essentially, we'd have three quarters of rate increase for the fiscal year. But that's why we're still asking for the increase and we can have a, a discussion on that. And our, our plan would be to implement from our current rate to whatever the proposed rate is over two fiscal years. Our two, two, you know, fiscal starting in July. And so we'd probably have a three-ish dollar rate increase versus the two or so that the rate increase is proposing. But that's, again, can be a discussion if council says, hey, you're not even charging what we currently approve and you don't want to approve something now. That's fine. If we want to do something, starting July 1st, we would probably ask for that rate increase outside the budget process. So we would have that in time to have it for July. Otherwise, we'll, we'll look at that, you know, as we move forward. Are there major equipment purchases? As you all know, our, our fleet services, they purchase the majority of the vehicles for the entire city. So they're always major purchases, but nothing really new. Most of those are just replacing equipment as it comes up to the end of its life. In our budget, our public service one for, for ourselves, we do have in our sanitary fund, we have a dump truck, excavator, a lift and a generator. And that's both kind of split between sanitary and storm fund. So fleet pays for the storm side because that is non-enterprise and sanitary fund pays cash upfront for those vehicles. For trash, we have one packer that we're asking for and the same thing for recycling and yard waste. So those are the only major asks there that are not in the, the fleet fund that are paid directly by enterprise funds. Any eliminating, combining or contracting positions? No, no changes in the budget. Here's the good question. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? And at our current service levels, yes, we can. So that means our roads stay in roughly the same condition as they are. Our sidewalks stay in roughly the same condition they are. So within that aspect, we can. But without additional funding with, say, CSO, we wouldn't have enough road funding really. And without the Board of Water and Light kind of ramping up their water main replacement, that is also helping our roads. So we're a deficit of, call it 250, 300 million on the roadside. If we were looking at condition now and what to bring those up to good, good condition. Majority of that money that we're using now does come from the state. So we have gas and weight tax through Act 51 that comes distributed to the city based on miles of road. We also have the millage. And then when we go into CSO areas, again, Board of Water and Light, if they're doing water main replacement, whatever that trench is or side of the road, they're replacing that. And with sewer separation, we're replacing the road at that point in time. So kind of all those combined, but we're still facing a deficit, especially on the local street side. So as you probably know, looking at your budget, we are transferring money, several million dollars from a major street fund to our local street fund every single year. And that's just because we have more miles, kind of equivalent, on the local street side than the funding we get. There's much more funding for major streets than there is for local streets. So if you look at our normal major streets, they may be four-ish lanes wide in general. Our local streets are two and a half to three lanes wide. And it's disproportionate funding we're getting with the expectation of the state that we'll have local funds to take care of the capital needs in the local streets because they provide local access and they're not for, for, I'll call it, the general public, you know, everyone outside the, the city using. They're more for local access to the properties. So. And then, let's see. New initiatives or services? We plan, and this is a grant that we have, to have a recycling drop-off center. So as folks know, we currently assess for one to four unit households. But commercial properties, unless they pay for recycling, do not get that. Apartment buildings don't have that. So we will have a drop-off center hopefully this summer, summer slash fall, at our O and M campus on South Street. We were just trying to negotiate, there's a little sliver of property there that's owned by Norfolk Southern, the railroad. Even though they've never had tracks there, we're trying to negotiate a lease from them. And then we can actually put that drop-off center and it will look something like the Granger one or if people have dropped off at East Lansing, up at the north side of town, they'll know it's drive-through and, and drop things off and then we'll take those over to our processor. So that is the, the large kind of change that we're trying to do. And then the, our largest vendors, and I think council may want something different than just by department. We're a very large department and our largest vendors change project by project. So right now, our largest vendors are Levin Stark, our CSO contractor, and then Hoffman Brothers, another CSO contractor. And so if you're looking at more traditional service type of vendors, then we can look by division of what those are and bid back out. But in general, all of our largest vendors are related to construction, whether the contractor or our engineering consultants to do that. And at least for our engineering consultant, which normally that's a five-year, we just bid that back out. And, and so we are looking to, to bid these out. But again, if council would like that by division, we can provide that by division of what our largest vendors are and when those have been last bid. You talked about, you know, with our security, that will be bid back out. So for property management, that's one of the large vendors for property management. And that's something we're looking through to see when things were last bid. We did just bid out both our electrical services, our as-needed there, and our plumbing and mechanical. We're looking at doing elevator soon. Janitorial is coming out and then obviously, security is coming out. So some of those that have not been bid for a while, we'll be bidding wastewater plant. We have our, our sludge hauling, our land application, and people probably don't want that in their gardens, but there is a market for that. That not, has not been bid out in a while, so that will be bid out in the next six months as well. Let's see. Changes to be more efficient. One thing we're doing, which is not a large dollar amount, but with our basement backup prevention program, we are kind of moving the administration of that in-house and we'll streamline that. So it's really more of that is on the resident, not us, seeing whether we think there is a potential for backup because of the sewer. But if the resident feels that it is in their interest to put in the sump pump and the backflow valve, then we will participate just as we have now. And so it can be outside areas that normally have backups. And our thought is it will not cost the city more to do that because our administrative burden right now is about $1,500 per participant that goes through the property or through the program. And so by eliminating that burden and essentially just reimbursing the property owner who feels that they need it and have kind of met our, our criteria, we feel we'll be able to take that administrative cost and put it towards actually getting these improvements made. So we'll, we'll try that out and it may be a couple thousand we save, but we may be able to serve more customers or more residents that way. And that's, I think, the questions.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none? Okay, just very quickly, number one, yes, I think we would love some type of report, top, top vendors per six divisions, last time they were bid, et cetera. The other piece is, we, we, we've all been tagged on social media regarding some of our, you know, we have seasonal employee concerns as it pertains to yard waste and recycling. And so I'm going to read something to you and what I, because I, I do believe that the answer will be budget ter, it, it will be budget-focused. And so, and I'd like you to address it. Says that the mayor set up Monday's council meeting that composting starts next week. He started off saying it would be behind schedule due to the amount of composting set out. The reality is that it will be behind because once again, the city hasn't hired the six employees paid for through the fee. Two for recycling and four for composting. In addition to the new truck the fee pays for, it's got nothing to do with volume, nothing at all. It's blatant fraud against the property owners of Lansing. They have another 2% raise in the fee in this year's budget. The fee covers a multitude of services from street sweeping to catch basin cleaning to leaf cleanup in the fall and weekly pickup of composting. We get very little, if any of those things, we pay a fee for. Will the council vote to raise the fee again, knowing that we don't get what we pay for? The city held a seasonal jobs fair. They received 25 passing applications and hands-on testing, yet the city has failed to hire even one more employee that the fee pays for. Elections have consequences. And the reason why I'm handing this over, so that folks know behind the curtain, I actually have addressed this already with Mr. Kilpatrick. He answered, you know, the concerns, assuaged some of the concerns. But I thought that because this has been such a, a public conversation, that would be appropriate to ask in this, in this forum. Thank you.
Great. It's a good question. And essentially, on the job fair for seasonals, we did get a large number of applicants. But because you needed a commercial driver's license to drive our trash or recycle trucks, we did not get applicants that had a CDL at that point in time. After that, we did get one person that applied that did have a CDL. And we're trying to see if they want only a seasonal job or a full-time job because we do have full-time jobs that require a CDL. So if we don't have seasonals to do yard waste and recycling, what we do is we use our full-time employees. And they, they run those routes. And so we are still providing it. Generally, the reason that we're behind is not because we don't have CDLs or, or drivers. Sometimes it's because trucks are down. But a lot of times, at the very beginning of the yard waste season, people put a whole lot of yard waste out and we're not really able to do that for the first round or two. We are behind. This year so far, I mean, we started yesterday, today, today, sorry, the 15th, we started today and it's looking like it's, I don't want to say fairly light, but not as heavy as it had been in previous years. And so we're hopeful that we'll be able to stay on schedule. Or if we work Friday and/or Saturday, we will be able to collect this ye, week's. Or if we work Friday and/or Saturday, we will be able to collect this year, week's yard waste this week. So it might be a day or two behind, but we've had times in the past where we've been a week plus behind. And as council members on the south side know, that when we start at the north side on Monday, if we're behind, we get very behind on the south side. What we've instructed this year to do is if we start to get a little bit behind, make sure that we at least start each day with that. So at least we'll have one or two trucks in that. And so everyone gets a little bit behind versus the south side sort of losing out. But it is not related to the fact that we didn't get seasonals. And as far as those other services, street sweeping is not paid for by that, that fee. That is, we use our, our road money to pay for street sweeping. The leaf pushing at the end of the year that we do, when people, you know, the leaves that are in the street, that's not paid for by this fee. This is just to pick up what is at the curb, in the bags, and just the recycling. So, and any extra fee, if we save money because we're not, you know, using as, as much staff time, that money stays in the fund. So that money does not leave the fund. It will just mean that the rate increase the next year would be lower. Conversely, if somehow our costs are much higher because we have overtime of our full-time employees and that cost is higher, then we'd come back to council the next year to say, hey, look, our, our, you know, costs were higher. We need to raise that. If you want to have your internal auditor, once you actually have an internal auditor, look at our fund balance. Jake will hit me here, but we are still kind of at a deficit of this fund total. If you look at our long-term costs, we are still negative. We're not covering all of our, our OPEB costs. So if you look at kind of money sitting there, we could pre-fund some of that because we don't want, say, you know, business and enterprise fund to be potentially subsidized by the city in the future. So we're trying to make sure that our fees are covering both our operational costs and our long-term costs. And so that, that's something that I think we could look at in the future. But if you look into those budgets, say, we have a count that says equity and pooled cash and you're like, wow, you guys have lots of money there. Well, we still have a long-term liability that we have to fund. We need to make sure that, you know, we're not coming to the city asking for that, that money in the future. So I don't know if that asked, all those points, but.
Yeah, I think you addressed every one of them.
Okay.
Do we have further questions, comments? Seeing none, thanks so much for being here.
All right, sorry to bore you so much, but.
All right, that takes us to the Department of Neighborhoods, Arts and Citizen Engagement. Oops, sorry, that takes us to the neighborhood, I'm sorry, Neighborhoods, Arts and Citizen Engagement Department. We do have Delisa Fontaine with us. As Delisa will come up into the well, make sure that the green light is on. We'll turn the floor over and as we have been all night, we will hold comments and questions till the end. How are you?
Good, thank you.
It's good to see you. Very well, thank you.
Is the green light on?
It looked like it was for a second, okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, council members. So I have written out all my answers. If you'd like them delivered to you by email tomorrow, I could certainly do so. So you have a physical copy of that. So I'll just go ahead and get started. Number one, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Our total difference is less than 1%. The operational costs have increased, but that is due to the inclusion of the grants administrator and the two financial empowerment counselors. Miscellaneous ops has decreased across the department. Contractual services has decreased by 66% due to the inclusion of the positions that I stated before, the grants administrator and the two FEC counselors. And our neighborhood grants line item has increased as well. So we can see a greater impact in our neighborhood projects. Number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? The only changes are just the ongoing changes we have. Of course, 3-1-1 continues to bring in additional departments on board. Our OFE is bringing, of course, the FEC in-house, the additional, the addition of two financial counselors, those that was previously in the contractual line item. We eliminated one contractual position. We now have one position in-house that serves as a program manager over all four programs versus splitting the responsibility to two people. But that was all done in fiscal year 25, or 24, excuse me. So no big changes as far as 25 is concerned. Are there any rate or fee increases? And if so, why? No, that's not applicable to our department. We have no rates and we have no fees. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? I did ask for a brand-new Mercedes, but I was turned down for that? No. There's no, no equipment purchases proposed in our budget, and so it's not applicable to us. Are there any eliminated, combining or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics. We did all our restructuring in fiscal year 24, so coming up on 25, no, there is no restructuring. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Very strong yes. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? Across the board, of course, with Neighborhoods, OFE and with 3-1-1, we are focused on uplifting our current services and programs. So as of today, I did have to put in a disclaimer, as of today, we're not implementing new initiatives or services. But of course, if council or our residents come to us and want us to implement a new program, we are always happy to do so. Let's see. Number eight, who are the top two largest vendors for your department and when were they last bid? So this was a little kind of tricky for us, sort of focusing on the question. Based on our transaction by vendor, our top two vendors have been Crystal Ray Community Center and MSU Federal Credit Union, which is our Lansing Save partner. But that obviously will change since FEC is now in-house. So I looked at our other top two vendors, and those are the two that work with our OS reentry program that are paid with the grant dollars we receive from the state of Michigan specifically for that program. And so those were recently last bid within the last couple of years. And number nine, what if any operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department? And what were the savings? So bringing the FEC in-house, the addition of two financial counselors. We now have one full-time position that will serve as program manager over all four programs versus splitting the responsibilities to two people. We have the grants administrator that is keeping all of our partnerships and compliance while allowing that position to partially be paid for through the grants we do receive in OFE. We have, over the course of the last year, placed a higher emphasis on fundraising for Lansing Save, which has brought in $200,000 that went directly to our Lansing Save students into their accounts. Moving our OFE into Rio allowed us to uplift the Bold Lansing Initiative. We will cross-train our counselors and Vida Tax Prep. This will allow families to come into one building to be able to vote, check their child's Lansing Save balance, have a counseling session, apply for the Promise Scholarship and complete their FAFSA paperwork. This can be called a Bold Building, if we'd like to do that, which, for those who may not know, who are listening or watching, Bold stands for Believe, Optimize, Learn and Dream, helping families from kindergarten to retirement. And our 3-1-1 allocations for fiscal '25, we worked with the Finance Department. The fiscal year '25 budget allocation was created using data from the previous year's call association by knowledge-based articles. So if you ever hear us say KBA, that's what those are, linked per call. So that means every call possible will be linked to a KBA according to its needs. For example, tax and treasury, clerks, public service, and et cetera. I feel like I spoke super fast, so I'm sorry.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Fontaine? Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Thank you for being here today and just sounds really exciting about all the bold moves that you're making. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any others? Seeing none, I just want to say thank you to you as well. I see you everywhere, whether it's Leno, whether it's a cleanup, whether it's swag, whether it's my constituent contact meetings. But it's not just you, it's Robin, it's Augie, it's Amber, it's, I mean, you guys are out, you're about, are out and about and we appreciate that. I think really supporting the community and empowering them through education of what it is you all do. So I just wanted to say thank you. And then outside of the Mercedes you requested, was there anything else in your request of the administration that you all did not receive?
No, no, no. The one push I did have was to increase the neighborhood grants line.
Okay, and we're going from 80K to 100K.
Yes.
Is that correct? Fantastic. All right, thanks so much. We appreciate you being here. All right, that takes us to Human Resources. We do have Elizabeth O'Leary and her team, maybe just Elizabeth, okay, great. You guys want to come on up? You know how it's done, we're going to go ahead and turn the floor over to you and then we'll open the floor up for questions and comments from the council. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth O'Leary and I have my deputy director, Kyla Moore, here with me. And we will go through the questions that you presented. What is the difference with your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? We have added a training/dispute resolution position. I will note in the last year that we've, we've launched an online training system called the Lansing Learning Stacks through Cornerstone. And we found that we really need to have an owner of this to be able to property, properly use it. We have people in our department that are pitching in to help to get things out, but we need somebody that's going to be invested in the learning management of the city as a whole. I know departments do a lot of their own trainings, but we want to be able to capture those and also have compliance-related trainings from, that are coming from HR on a regular basis for, for the entire organization. The second piece of this position would be in the realm of dispute resolution and finding solutions to internal issues. We found that there are times where we are looking into certain situations within HR and they may not rise to the level of a policy violation, but we still know that something needs to be done. And so this person would be charged with finding resources or trainings or some kind of dispute resolution to, to come to proper resolve on resolving issues within the organization. We're also increasing our temporary helpline from $70,000 to $80,000. As of today, we have two contract workers that are assisting with the hiring to help fill some of these budgeted vacant positions. And we also have one employee assisting with payroll and benefits. As you may be aware, we are currently having to do an upgrade to our current payroll system, to a cloud-based payroll system. And then we will turn around and do another upgrade to our payroll system up to a whole different vendor. So that's all in one year, and so we have somebody assisting to help us with some of the day-to-day payroll. We're increasing our overtime hours from $2,000 to, or to, yeah, $2,000 to $10,000. This is necessary because many times, some of the recruitment events or other events that we want our team to be able to attend is off-hours. And so we want to make sure that we have the resources to be able to attend those recruitment events and to provide those services to city employees and the community. Our, the parking subsidy, well, I think you've already noticed that the $500,000 that was in the parking subsidy has been removed from Human Resources and it'll be allocated to the specific departments. I think Jake's already touched on why this is important, so I won't belabor that point. Miscellaneous operating, we're going from $58,000 to $63,800. Included in this is general office supplies, job fairs, recruitment supplies, background screenings, advertisements, you know, memberships such as like SHRM and other, other things that we need to be able to do our jobs on a daily basis. Medical services is going from $72,000 to $90,000. This includes our pre-employment physicals, respiratory fit tests, drug screenings, and everything that's needed in the hiring process and also fit-for-duties and other medical services needed. Training. In the last year, we've realized that training is such an important component for Human Resources and beyond. And so we are requesting that our training budget go from $25,000 to $50,000. The next question is, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? And the answer is no. Is there any rate or fee increases? There's not any rate or fee increases, we're primarily an internal service department. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No. Are there any eliminating, combining, contracting of positions within your budget? And if so, please provide specifics. We're not eliminating any budgeted FTEs. We currently have two contract employees, as stated prior, assisting with hiring, one contract employee assisting with payroll and benefits. And then I also have two labor relations interns that are in college right now. Are you able to perform all the necessary departmental responsibilities within this budget? Yes. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? We will be doing, as you're aware, updates to the hiring process. We have the One Solution upgrade and the BSA upgrade to the payroll system. We're also in the process of starting, we'll be launching soon our performance evaluations and also a revamp to organizational-wide training if the requested position is approved. What are the top two largest vendors for your department and when were they last bid? The top vendor for our department is Emco. They help with our police and fire promotional processes. And you will also see that this one, Emco will be moved to the police budget for this upcoming because they're, they're the facilitators of that process primarily. HR is in the loop on those things, but it was properly allocated in the police department budget. Sparrow Occupational Health is our other top vendor. And we will, oh, and I, let me go back to Emco. It was last bid last fall. Sparrow, we have a contract through September of 2024. So we will be bidding this out in the next couple of months. This is where all of our pre-employment physicals go through drug testing, any kind of reasonable suspicion, all of those services and respiratory fit, all that all goes through Sparrow Occupational Health. What operational changes have you made to become more efficient in the department? What are your savings? Currently, we're working on the updates to the hiring process and again, the payroll system upgrades are underway.
And that's it? Okay, Mrs. Moore, did you have anything to add before we turn the floor over?
No, thank you.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments? Not a single question, not a single comment. You must have done a great job, Ms. O'Leary.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Yeah, absolutely. And I, I do believe that there's going to be some desire to potentially bring you in just to talk about, you know, more of the, you know, the scheme, the process, the, you know, things that you guys are doing internally, just to make sure that the process is efficient as possible. I know you guys are working incredibly hard, but that's for a later conversation, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, thanks so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. That takes us to Parks and Recreation. We do have our director, Rick Krasinski, with us. And although it looks like he is not coming down, we also have one of our park board members on hand, Mr. Tiersen Walters, who also does an incredible job getting out into the community, does, you know, regular park tours with citizens and elected officials and takes issues back to the board and, and maybe most importantly, actually gets traction on a lot of those issues. So we appreciate you, Tiersen. Mr. Krasinski, we're going to turn the floor over to you and then we will open it up for council comments and questions. Thank you.
Okay, so the first question is, what is the difference with your budget from the current year to, and you will not see really significant change. We will go over some of the changes that we have coming up with fees and also with our capital improvement projects. But otherwise, we are basically the same budget as we have been previously. Changes in services? Nope, we do not have changes in services. Are there any rate or fee increases? And if so, why? Yes, I would turn your attention to page 184, I believe, of your book. And there you will see the new fees that we have for this year. I won't go through them line by line, but just kind of talk about them. We have some that are brand-new fees. We are taking up our after-school and some of our classes in our community centers, including our aquatics classes. There are some fee increases for Turner Dodge. Many of them regarding our athletic field permits for both adult and, and youth looking to rent fields there. So we have increased that for those sports as well. And then also fee increases with our cemetery fees. And those include cemetery lot sales and for columbarium, as well as marker cuts and grave opening and closing fees. So that is our new fees for this year. And again, those are listed for you in your book on page 184. Any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No. Any eliminating, combining or contracting? We basic, we have the same org chart as we had last year. Are we able to perform all the necessary department responsibilities with this budget? Yes. Any new initiatives or services your department will be providing? I will now focus your attention to page 154. And this is where you will find our capital improvement projects for this year that we are proposing. So Grant Match is in there. Oh, and first of all, you'll see the subsidy that we have there from both the cemeteries and with Gulf. And then we have our cemetery, or excuse me, our Grant Match program. This is the program where we're able to match funding, whether that be from the state of Michigan or any of our other grants, also from the county for trails projects as well. Citywide repair and maintenance, generally, we are always at about $300,000. This is for things that come up that were not unplanned or unscheduled maintenance, whether that be in the parks or at the community centers. So that is the fund there. We are, we have gone out for bid and we will be starting our five-year plan. for bid, and we will be starting our five-year plan, um, beginning in twenty twenty-five. So twenty twenty-five will be the start of the five-year master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department, um, playground installation and renovation. So that fund will be used to update several of our, uh, playgrounds throughout and also repair any playgrounds that are broken, anything that comes in as far as swing damage, slide damage, et cetera. It also pays for the safety surfacing that goes into our playgrounds. So that is in our, uh, our playground program there. Um, the Board Grant Match Program, this is something similar to what is done in neighborhoods and citizen engagement, um, with the process for neighborhoods to be able to apply, or it will be for matching against the grant, um, that individuals can, or groups can apply for with the neighborhood grant program. So this is something new this year that the Board, our Park Board, uh, would like to do, and so we are putting that in there for this year. It will be, again, similar timelines to that neighborhood grant program, and we'll be using a similar format that they use for that. So, we have seen a lot of the, uh, neighborhood grants really focus around those public spaces in their neighborhood, which are parks, and so this will be able to match that as well. The kids camp, staff, and lifeguard, this is an area, especially with lifeguards, that we have great concern, is, um, our ability to be able to hire what is a very limited staff around there. And for us to be able to provide lifeguards at the outdoor pools, um, Hunter this year and in the future, Moores, but really to be able to teach how to swim, to teach life safety skills with swimming, that is a big, big part for us. And so, uh, to be able to recruit, to be able to train, to be able to keep, to be able to pay the wage that will bring those individuals and keep those individuals for us, uh, in the lifeguard program. So that is big, and we also know about the issues with, um, childcare, and that includes our after-school program, but especially our summer camp. And to be able to have enough leaders and to be able to pay them that wage so that we're able to provide for our Lansing residents during the summer when they need care. So that is what, um, that fund is there. Uh, trees has been going well, but I will remind people, um, we can, we have plenty of trees. Trees are gonna be going out here shortly. Residents that applied for those will receive contact from, um, from our office because we will be doing the planting here and then also in the parks as well. But we can definitely use neighborhoods, um, helping those that maybe cannot plant a tree to be able to get that resident permission and be able to put that between the street, um, and the sidewalk to be able to plant the right tree in the right place. So that will be going again this year, and then these funds are for, um, the future with that. Wentworth Park, right downtown, um, right along the river, across from the Lansing Center. We're looking to improve the fence in that area and, and make a trail connection that will connect from the accident fund there to Michigan Avenue. So that is a, uh, a new project coming forward there. Bancroft, adding an electronic gate there, and then putting some money towards the Rutter Park Fountain. This is not enough to fix the fountain, but this is a placeholder, I guess, and if we can do this over several years, as far as how to eat the elephant, which right now, our guess and estimate based on previous engineering surveys, we're looking at about three-quarters of a million dollars for Rutter Park Fountain to be able to repair that. So this is a portion of that that we're setting aside. And those are the, um, capital improvement projects or the new things that are happening, I guess, within the department's budget this year. Top two vendors, this year it'll be, uh, Fessler Bowman. They are redoing the parking lots at Guyer and Davis, and they also redid the, um, drive-through Francis Park. So that is our construction contractor there. It was about a two-million-dollar project when you include the engineering fees. And then Rhino Recreation, which is for six-point-two million dollars. That's for the Moores Park Pool. Um, ongoing are the Board of Water and Light with the utilities that we have in our community centers and our parks. It's probably the biggest vendor along with the Lansing School District for the rent for the Schmidt Community Center, uh, and then United for our mowing. So those are the vendors. And then, um, operational changes to, and what has helped us become more efficient, I would just focus again on Lansing Connect and the ability for, um, individuals to report what is out there, what is wrong in the parks, um, and to be able to report any issues out there. With a hundred and eleven parks, uh, twenty-five miles of river trail, and two thousand acres of parkland, we need those eyes out there, and when folks can put in that, um, Lansing Connect issue, we're able to get that right away and be able to send our staff out there to be able to correct the issues. So that's all I had, um, with the questions that you put forward.
Fantastic. We appreciate the, uh, presentation. Are there questions, Councilman Spatafor?
Thanks, Vice President Hussein. Um, can you, I've got, like, three short questions, and they're all water-related, it turns out. Uh, you said Rutter Park was seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand is what you anticipate the?
That's our estimate right now.
Okay. Um, what is the timeline on the, remind us, please, the timeline on the Moores Park Pool. I know they've started work over there.
We have started work on that. Um, we will definitely be in construction this entire year. We will be in construction, we believe, uh, in twenty twenty-five. We would look at, again, and we'll have a more firm thing as, as we get going, because we're still working through the permit process on this. Um, but looking at, in twenty twenty-five, we would have a better idea of when the ribbon cutting would be and when the splashdown would be.
Certainly not this year. Okay, and then I recall that we received some funding from the Community Foundation for Brinkie Fishladder, um, that project over there, but I didn't hear you mention it, and I might have been scrolling to the page, but what's that?
No, that project will be taking place this year. We're looking to get the engineering, uh, estimates back on that. The reason we don't have it here in this budget is because from the state through the appropriations, that was appropriated directly to the Community Foundation. And so while that project will be happening, uh, and taking place in the parks, uh, and it'll probably be late this year and again into next year, it is not part of this budget, though.
And there's no city match on that, or will there be a city match for that project?
Right now, we do not have a city match on that. Again, a lot of that will depend on exactly what the construction costs are base, or, um, versus what the allocation is that we have from the state versus what funds are raised through Community Foundation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we appreciate that. Other questions, comments? Very quickly, the, the Park Board has kind of an annual exercise with regards to your CIP piece. Um, there is stickers used and such, I remember, yeah, from my time on the Park Board, uh, and then that is actually sent over to the administration, uh, as, as part of the request. Was that altered in any way this year?
The Park Board, um, what the Park Board approved and what the mayor has before you are exactly the same.
Perfect, okay. That's what I wanted to hear. Um, secondly, uh, with regard to, uh, capital improvement projects that were approved last year, um, one was, uh, the, the fitness pad, correct? Uh, have we determined a location for that yet?
So one of the locations that we are strongly considering, as we had a grant for it at Davis Park, but we were denied, is looking at Davis Park for that project then. Um, that's, obviously, we have a hundred and eleven parks, but I would say that Davis is the top on the list for that. Location-wise, too, we have one at Maguire, um, we'll have one at Washington Park, which is dead center of the city. We have one at, um, Riverfront Park, so looking for that south and really that southwest area, uh, in terms of fitness courts. That's what we're looking at.
Excellent, okay. And with regard to, uh, the, the playground installation and renovation, roughly how many playgrounds are we actually replacing, uh, annually right now?
So that is something that our Park Board is gonna be going out, getting into the community for that. We do not wanna set an amount that this park is going to get this amount and vice versa. So they have a list right now of some areas that are in need. Um, and then also taking a look at how many, for instance, two to five playgrounds that we have, and do we want to build a bigger playground for that preschool age, and is that something that we take a look at there? So really, we do not pinpoint an amount per playground of what that would be.
Okay, but I think I heard you say, you, you touched on this, this idea of the park were going out engaging, um, and maybe having the community kind of envision what they would like as part of the playground.
That's all on their docket right now.
That's fantastic. Uh, and then lastly, with regard to United, we did talk about them being one of the larger contracts. When's the last time they were, they, they bid out, or we bid that out, sorry?
So right now, we are in year three. Uh, it can go one-year renewals at a time up to five. Uh, so the next bid for United, um, again, assuming that we're gonna continue to renew with them, because it's every year, but then we would have to bid that out December of twenty twenty-six.
Okay. And then, did we, so I looked at the contract, uh, last year along with our internal auditor, because we're having issues with trash pickup and things like that. Uh, and we learned that, in fact, they are responsible, uh, for picking up litter, uh, things of that nature, that there, there was actually clawback language if those things were happening. Um, we could actually, um, withhold payment, things like that. Are we monitoring at all, um, the, the job that they are doing and ensuring that they are actually fulfilling all the provisions of that contract?
Yes.
How do we do that? Okay. Cause there's a lot of parks.
A lot of parks.
Is it mostly complaint-based? Do we have some strategy?
No, we have staff out there that are responsible for the oversight of that contract.
Okay. All right. Do we have other questions, comments? Sayna, we appreciate your time. Thank you, Brett. All right, that takes us to Human Relations and Community Services. We do have Kim Coleman on hand. Uh, looks like she might have a few of the members of her team, so we'll let her introduce them when they come down to the well.
Absolutely.
Welcome, Ms. Coleman. We appreciate you being here. We appreciate you being patient. It's been a long night, uh, but we're gonna go ahead and turn the floor over to you if you want to introduce your team, uh, and then get started with answers to the questions. We'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, Vice President Hussein and members of the council. I am pleased to be here and pleased to have here with me, um, Delbetta Moses, our Deputy Director, Tony Young, our, uh, Contract Management Administrator, and, uh, two members of our Board, and that would be, uh, Ron Embry, who's Chair of the Board, and Melissa Hoist, who is Chair of our Policy Committee. You have noted the questions you wanted responses to, and I will go ahead and proceed those questions. What is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Funding for FY twenty twenty-five includes converting a contracted secretary's position to a full-time and adding a full-time position for prevailing wage and other compliance enforcement. Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? There are none. Are there any, any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? There are none. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? There are none. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting positions in your budget, and if so, provide specifics? Yes, we are converting a contracted secretary position to full-time for better employee retention and service delivery. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? Yes. Uh, we have the, uh, alternative temporary shelter. As you know, and RFP was released to create a twenty-four-seven temporary shelter to reduce street homelessness. Uh, HRCS staff and members of the HRCS Advisory Board are currently considering proposals for the structure and city-owned properties to identify the best option to address the needs. A recommendation will be submitted to the, to the mayor within the next two weeks. The proposed shelter will be in a central and easy, easily accessible area of the city. It will have the capacity to accommodate seventy-five to a hundred individuals and will provide temporary housing, improved access to services, reduce the strain on existing shelter facilities, and continue to the, uh, and contribute to the overall well-being and stability of our city. A second, our RFP will go out, uh, in May with regard to the operations of the shelter. And then there are several items that we are doing that are not direct, that are not directly included in our department budget, and they include implementing the council's priorities and recommendations, such as the landlord incentive pilot program to encourage, uh, renting to Section Eight recipients and individuals with criminal histories, the development of a comprehensive plan or needs assessment to ensure general funds are being utilized as intended, DEI training for provider agencies and housing fares, all using a combination of our twenty twenty-four and twenty-three carry-forward funds. Number eight, who are the top two largest vendors for your department, and when were they last bid? Troy Rescue Mission Ministries, uh, last bid, October twenty twenty-three. Holy Cross Services, uh, last bid, October twenty twenty-three. Uh, what operational changes have made, have you made to become more efficient in your department? Uh, we are now using three-one-one for our departmental cause, which allows staff to focus on escalated cause and, uh, a range of critical services for the community. We continue to build staff capacity and strengthen our procedures and oversight to be, to best meet the needs of the community and the city of Lansing.
And that's it?
Sure.
All right, fantastic. Uh, do we have any questions or comments from the body? Uh, Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. When, when you talked about the temporary shelter, I think you also maybe mistakenly said temporary housing as well.
I meant shelter.
Temporary shelter.
Yes.
So, can you explain the, where that came from? Is that the state won the eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, we had LET, um, LET Center, right? So what's happening, like, with that and the transition and, like, the money?
Yeah. LET Center comes to a close at the end of this month, uh, and then we will start up a new one in November, hopefully, uh, that will allow for, uh, twenty-four-seven. Uh, we anticipate having beds or cots for folks to sleep in and services that'll be coordinated, case management services.
Thank you. So it, it almost sounds like a restart to the warming center?
The warming center was not intended to be the solution, but an option for this season because it was important to us to get the people out of the cold. Um, the intent now is to provide the type of shelter that the funds were intended to provide.
Thank you. And about how much, is it, how much money is left?
Of the eight hundred thousand? Eight hundred thousand. The LET Center was, uh, funded out of our operations, and we will help support the, uh, shelter using, uh, the eight hundred thousand along with, uh, twenty twenty-four operation dollars and, uh, carry-forwards.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cost?
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Um, so do we have a plan once eight hundred thousand dollars grant money is extinguished moving forward?
Our plan is to continue to operate until such time that there's no need for it. Uh, the hopes were to help supplement, not totally replace, the shelter services that are currently out there. It is our understanding that the, uh, largest shelter being, um, City Rescue Mission should be up and running at full capacity in three years, uh, and that, uh, Holy Cross will have some expansion before then, but not enough to cover the people that'll need it. And so our intentions were to supplement the services until such time that they weren't needed.
And then, uh, under the recommendations for the, um, grants, um, do these different groups get vetted, um, before they're, um, given the money?
Yes. Uh, and perhaps, uh, Vice President Hussein, I was going to move forward with the, um, grant recommendations once this part was done. Would you like for us to move on into that now?
Absolutely. Um, let, let's make sure that there are no other questions or comments as it pertains to, um, your presentation. The, the only question I have, uh, very quickly, and then, and then we'll move on to that, absolutely. Uh, we actually received correspondence- We actually received correspondence from a constituent. It actually deals with item D and then this idea of potentially contracting with our outgoing city attorney on a long-term basis. So I'll have some questions with regard to that. And so, to be fair, I do have a question for you. You were, I believe, as director, your tenure with the city of Lansing was announced in February 2020. At the time, we had had an individual that was the interim for several weeks. And as it was kind of told to us, that individual was going to stay on through what was to be a transitional period. That individual, however, has been on contract, I think, to the tune of about $72,000 a year since that time. And so I'm curious as to why we have maintained that position when, at the inception, that's not how it was explained to us. Thank you.
That individual continued to assist and work with us with regard to the equity programs and services.
I think people are struggling here. Can you pull that mic up just a little bit closer? Thank you so much.
Now I'll be loud like everybody else. The individual continued to work with us with regard to race and equity, but also with regard to police commission and a number of other areas. And so, at the time when we had him, didn't have a deputy, and so he picked up a lot of those responsibilities as well. His time will be reduced, beginning the first of this fiscal year, to 10 hours a week. Well, he'll continue to do some things with us with regard to race and equity and will help us with the training of the commission investigator, so.
Okay. And so that reduction, is that reflected in the budget? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. All right, if you want to move on, we'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Hi, everyone. I just want to talk a little bit about the applications we received and how they were managed. We did receive 76 applications for grants. 92% of the programs submitted were funded in this information you have before you. Of those funded, six of them are new programs that serve high priority, either target populations or high priority services to the community. And we can give you examples if you like. The returning programs that were funded were generally kept at a status quo award amounts this year that mirror their current year award, although there were about eight programs that received slight increases because of doing, providing high priority services or people. And there were only six programs that were not funded that were received. And that was largely due to either apparent duplication of services or the proposals didn't have adequate program plans or the request didn't meet the grant priorities as outlined in the ordinance for human services. So that's just a little background, and then we can answer questions. Yes. We ask for a number of documents that they are expected to have for their organization, and they submit those with the applications themselves. We review those before the awards are finalized.
So with, my concern is, there's one in particular on this list that even during the trial was known to be a benzodiazepine pill mill. And we've continued to give them money every year. So are we doing any, and I heard what you said, but doing any background? You know, are there processes, for example, medical care facility, that they're not doing anything that's not above, you know, I can't talk tonight, is illegal or questionable? I don't think that they were charged for it, but certainly was questionable behavior.
Yes, we do monitor. We monitored all the organizations this year in March. So we are still in the process of going through and writing up those monitoring letters and reviewing some of them before their grants will be finalized for the new year. So if they are recommended and we find that there's an issue, that will be redirected or reallocated to other organizations. So, yes. So, and if you are ever aware of things that, you know, you want to be sure we are knowledgeable about, please forward any information that you have.
All right, thank you.
All right, do we have other questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Thank you all for being here today. It looks like a lot of good groups are getting the support that they need. On the documentation that we have, it says fiscal year '23, '24 current award. Does that mean, and then it says the mayor recommendation. Was there not a recommendation by your department through the application process or the board members? Is that listed here or is that something different?
That is what this document is. This is for, this is for the grant cycle that began in, was it October? No, January, where they had an opportunity to review all of the applications, rank them and score them, and we met and decided who was going to get what. That is what this document is.
Okay, so this document then for this year, did, for example, did Capital Area Housing Partnership, PSH Supportive Services Program request $0 this year? And then it was your recommendation to give $5,000 as identified on this document? Because normally, I guess, it would be that they submitted for $5,000 and you approved $5,000?
Yeah, I think our headings might be misleading a little bit, so I apologize for that. The '23, '24 current award, that means that's where they're getting this year, the July through June year that ends in June 2024. The mayor's recommendations, because of the way that the ordinance says that we need to conduct this process, is they first are scored and reviewed by our board, our advisory board. Then they are provided to the director, who makes recommendations to the mayor. And then the final decision is the mayor's to make the recommendations to councils. So that's what the '24, '25 is. So the zero represents that they didn't have an award in the current year. And this is one of the new ones, one of the new agencies or the new programs. So that's why it says zero under '23, '24, because they aren't currently funded. And the $5,000 was their request that is being granted by this proposal.
Okay, so then for the Cialis Center, it says zero, and then it says $10,500. So that means they applied for $10,500?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then that was the recommendation?
Sometimes the recommendation doesn't mean that that's what they applied for. Sometimes it's not always everything that they applied for. But in those cases, I'm pretty sure that was the amount that they applied for.
Are we able to see what they applied for versus what the mayor recommendations are? So we can know the difference and have the understanding of that? Because when I'm looking at this, it just shows the mayor recommendations, not necessarily what they applied for or what you all recommended. Because I know that you guys, of course, I've worked with you for years even before council, that you're very hands-on with the organizations and, of course, the population that we serve as a community. And so I, you know, I would definitely, to, you know, be supportive of this, would like to see where it started versus where it ended up on this documentation.
Yes, we can provide that for you. We haven't in the past, but happy to get that.
Thank you so much.
All right. Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, we appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. All right, that takes us to, and what we're going to do in the interest of time, we're going to take city council and internal auditor, and we'll bump that to May 6. So our last departmental budget for tonight is the city attorney's office. We do have Mr. Greg Baker with us, who is going to move on down to the well. All right, thanks for being with us, Mr. Baker. When you are ready, you can begin your questions to the answers. Thank you.
All right.
Or answers to the questions, sorry.
I'll do it that way. Thanks. Good evening. Thank you. Glad to be here, here anyway, but happy to answer your questions. So, turning to the questions posed, what is the difference between your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Not much at all. I think there's essentially an inflationary increase due to salary increases and fringe, according to just general cost of living. Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, what are, or why? No, we are not changing our services. Are there any rate or fee increases? And if so, why? Again, no, we don't have any council-approved rates or fees that we charge. We're not, we're primarily an internal-facing agency for the city. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in our budget? No. Again, we, I think you can see our IT line actually goes down a little bit this year compared to last year because we are out of the major cycle of device purchases and things like that. Any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? If so, provide specifics. No, none. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes. Are there any new initiatives or services the department will be providing with this budget? No. Who are our top two largest vendors and when were they last bid? Our top two largest vendors are Carpel Computer Systems Incorporated. That is the, I think it was discussed in the prior budget submission. That is the software that we use, and I'll talk about it more down at the final question. That's the software that we use to manage and track all of our prosecution cases. We prosecute in four district courts on Mondays and Tuesdays. It takes up most of the first two days of the week for our office. And previously, we were using a system, I mean, I think we were using an archaic, no longer supported Microsoft something database that was going to cost a lot to even limp along. We transitioned over to Carpel. We also manage all of our cases through folders and stuff, just in a general Windows shared drive, which was a nightmare. We transitioned over to Carpel. It has made us much more efficient. That process of selection happened in, I think, late 2022. And it's a multi-year contract because the rollout was very involved. I was, I was actually the test pilot for that system when it rolled out in, I want to say, mid-late spring, early summer of 2023. And we now use it in all four of our district courts, and it's going very well. It lets us get all of our stuff, get the documents we need, get subpoenas out, track what letters have been sent, what the discovery's been sent to the defense, important things that we can now look at and get the information for immediately. So that was just bid out in 2022. And then the build process took like nine to 12 months to get it all put together and then actually rolled out. So we won't switch too soon, but it was recently done. Our other, second biggest contractor is Thompson Reuters, which is Westlaw. There are, I'll say, there are only, there are only two options for this service. I don't know the last time that it was actually bid. I know that since I've been here, we tried to switch to LexisNexis, which is the competitor to West. And I know that Councilmember Jackson knows all about this, and I'm guessing that Councilmember Pelafano-Glu knows about these services as well. We did switch to Lexis. There was a nominal savings at the time, and the service we received was not worth the savings. We ran through that contract, and then we switched back to West. I will say, West provides much more for what we actually need. Lexis is useful if we were private detectives, but we are not. So that was last, I want to say, that switch happened right before COVID. So I think 2021, we've been with West since then. But I don't necessarily see us going out to bid for that unless services change dramatically. It's a very limited field for legal research services. Those are our top two vendors. What, if any, operational changes have we made to become more efficient in our department? I was talking about Carpel earlier, and I won't go through a whole lot more with that other than to say it's been amazing. It integrates everything that we do with criminal prosecution, which is a very high volume of quick-action cases. And there's a lot of stuff that we have to get done in order to comply with constitutional requirements, statutory requirements for discovery and things like that. It lets us integrate with the police so that we can get videos. Body cam videos are everywhere now. There are many of them, and it lets us get to them quicker, make sure that they get to the right places and to the right people, and then use as evidence in cases. It has dramatically increased our ability to not be running around crazy on Mondays and Tuesdays or Thursdays and Fridays, getting ready for Mondays and Tuesdays. So I guess that is me answering the questions. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them as I know.
All right, we certainly appreciate that. Do we have questions or comments from Mr. Baker? So as referenced earlier, my only question, what is the plan? Because it will have a budget impact in terms of this transition period. Are we looking at keeping Jim Smirka on in some capacity, contractually?
I, that, part of that conversation is you should have with the mayor. I know that Jim is here through the end of June. And then, it's my understanding that he has filed to retire at the end of June and will be retiring. He's here, obviously, to help with the transition because he has been a city attorney for Lansing combined for like 19 years, I think, or 18 years, a very long time, and he knows a great deal. And I've been here a while, and I know a great deal as well, but Jim still knows a lot. And I think that's part of just good transitioning in general.
But we do have Jack Roberts still, correct, on contract?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just, Mr. Baker, I just don't know how many people we need to keep around. If it's through June 30th, excellent. But, you know, yeah, I think we probably have the capacity in the office for a strong transition post-June 30th. But we can have those conversations.
I would be happy to have those conversations. I will say, Jack Roberts gets paid an embarrassingly small amount of money. But I guess his papers and books and binders of information do occupy an office, so.
All right, and I appreciate that. With no other questions, you can join us back up at the dais. We appreciate you. All right, that takes us to discussion action item C. So kind of baked into our budget policies is this request, right, that these reports come to us on a quarterly basis. We just had HRCS up here to speak, not only to the budget, but they spoke to this piece too. And so I am going to turn the floor over to Mr. Spatafor for a motion to place on file.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would place this move to place this on file.
All right, there is a motion to place on file, the Human Services General Fund, second quarter fiscal year 2023, 2024 report. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those with a favor signified by saying aye. All right, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then that takes us to our last agenda item. This is a resolution of interim city attorney. Folks might remember that at our last meeting on April 8, we actually had in front of us a resolution to confirm Mr. Greg Baker as the permanent city attorney. There were some comments and some questions and concerns and things of that nature that were posed in semi-adress. But there was a, at the end of the conversation, there was a tabling of that resolution with a request for the administration to consider, although they don't, they're not necessarily required to, to consider a resolution of interim status that we could actually kind of weigh in on and consider. And so with that, Mr. Lawrence, we do have a resolution in front of us for interim city attorney. Do you have anything to add?
Nope, you did a great job.
Okay. All right, do we have questions or comments with regard to the resolution in front of us?
Who put this together?
Councilman Brown, what's the question?
Who put this together?
So this came from, Mr. Lawrence, correct me if I'm wrong, came from the administration with the help of the city attorney's office.
Okay. And when do we say Jim was retiring?
June 30.
My question will be, will we just want to make this from April 1st to June 30th? So that way it's consistent with the transition time?
Mr. Baker, do you want to weigh in?
If I can just briefly weigh in, Jim has stepped down from the city attorney position. So he no longer carries the title city attorney. There is no person carrying that title currently.
I appreciate the clarification.
Okay, I was just wondering where it says May 6 versus June 30. So is that just approximate 30-day or six weeks or...?
So because we tabled the resolution, I think the idea was to at least let this body weigh in on the interim aspect and have a resolution in front of us. Of course, this is not binding us to actually voting on the resolution that's tabled, or I should say, untabling and then actually voting on that resolution on May 6. Okay, got you. Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Yes, Councilman Spatafor?
I would move the resolution appointing Gregory Venker as the interim city attorney for the period from April 1, 2024, through May 6, 2024.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those with favor signified by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there any other business before the body? Seeing none, we are officially adjourned at 6:52.
I'm building a new schedule every week.